During the meeting. And seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Regan, thank you for being here. We appreciate you. I'm sorry. You're welcome to stay and finish your coffee. Thank you. All right. The next meeting is the April 6th, 2015 Mesa City Council Study Session. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation and discuss the city's health and wellness center. This is a great topic. I think we've all had good reports on this, but we look forward to hearing, learning more about it.
This morning, we wanted to give you a quick update on our new employee wellness center. And to help do that this morning, we've got some special guests that I'd like to introduce to you. Sitting next to me is Kristen Connor. Kristen is our City of Mesa Employee Wellness Manager. Kristen is our eyes and ears at the center and is also in charge of developing and implementing citywide employee health initiatives. Kristen is a nurse and has been for the last seven years and is also an exercise physiologist and nutritionist. Sitting next to Kristen is Dr. Cheryl Wathier. Dr. Wathier is the primary care physician at the center. Dr. Wathier graduated from Midwestern University, right here in Arizona, and she has been practicing medicine for the last 10 years. Sitting next to Dr. Wathier is Dr. Donna Milovitz. Dr. Milovitz is the owner and founder of On-Site Care Incorporated. On-Site Care is the company that we contract to, contract with to run the center. Dr. Milovitz is a medical doctor and an internist with nearly 20 years of clinical experience. She has a master's degree in public health and really has a passion for enhancing community health services. And if I might add, she has been absolutely terrific to work with, both in the design phase of the wellness center and now in its operation. As you may recall, on October 20th of last year, the wellness center opened its doors for business. And this morning, we'd just like to give you some key highlights about how the center is operating, including some of our utilization rates, as well as some key health success stories. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Kristen.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The first thing I wanted to start with is looking at clinic utilization, and we have really had an excellent turnout from our employees and their dependents, really have exceeded utilization at the center. We built out the plan initially for about 50% utilization. We're hoping for 80% to really come to our average, and now, as you can see on the, on the graph, we are averaging in the 90 percentile. We have had wonderful outpouring from our employees and their dependents and, and again, have really exceeded our expectations and are hoping to, in the future here, look for, for growth and further expansion as well. With that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Wathier here to elaborate a little bit more on the type of utilization that we have going on at the center, a little bit more specifics on the, on the clinical needs that we're taking care of.
I think Mr. Glover has a question.
Just a quick question on the earlier slide.
Sure.
I think it's wonderful that we can have, that it's being utilized. How does that relate to the capacity of the building itself and your capacity as an organization? And when we take it 200%, is it at full staff disregarding future growth? Or is that the maximum amount that you're able to do at that time?
We have opportunity for growth. We have room and, and capacity for growth. Made sure that we built a, a large clinic. We currently have, on most days of the week, we have three providers there. On a few days a week, we have two. So definitely in our, in our current arrangement, we have plenty of room for growth and oppor, and opportunity. If you look actually at our, the number of patients that we're taking care of, it's about 10% of our employee base. So we certainly have, I think, a wide range of growth to go from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning. It's nice to see you all here today. I would like to just show you a little slide here on the types of visits and the number of patients that we've actually been seeing. So you, we'll see here at the bottom that we do have total provider visits at 3,300. Now, that is some repeat visits, obviously, of patients coming back and seeing us. The nice thing is, is that we do have such availability that they can come back for rechecks or follow-ups very easily. As far as actually new patients, 1,214 has been the, the count of since we've opened in October. And we're very proud of that number that we have had so many patients, new ones, that have come through the doors. As a breakdown to this, you can see here by the slide that we're seeing a lot of annual wellness. You're also seeing the sick and acute. Now, of course, those were very popular visits during the flu season. We served a lot for streps and colds and chest congestion and bronchitis, but again, it was the availability of getting those patients in. We do, disease management has been a huge part of this. And with that, I'd like to be able to share a couple of our success stories with you just to show you what we've had. We've had actually employees and dependents that we have really, we feel made a difference in their lives and as they've told us. We've had a seven-year-old female who came in for her wellness check and a new heart murmur was discovered. We've got her off to cardiology. She was found to have an abnormal valve in her heart and now will need annual visits. But again, the parents are aware, she's going to need prophylactic antibiotics to protect her from disease during dental visits, but her parents were very happy to see that we were able to find this on such a, what they would think was just a normal visit. We've had, as far as the disease processes, a gentleman that I saw, 66-year-old employee who'd come in for a sinus infection in January and then February had some chest congestion and thought that this was just some remnants of the sinus infection, it was cold. But we got to listen to his heart, found an abnormality, did an EKG there at the center, found that he was in an abnormal rhythm. We were able to get him right off to cardiology again, and it was very successful as far as getting him back into rhythm, onto medications, and back to work. We've had a female, she's a 60-year-old female employee who has come in with a concern of maybe a breast lump. Sure enough, we went ahead and examined her and found the lump, got her to, and for a mammogram right again the next day, an ultrasound, and off to her breast surgeon. She's now had a mastectomy and is back to work. So some real people that we feel we've affected and they feel that they've been affected by having the clinic there have been so thankful that it's there and available to them. As far as any of the other visits I could give you about is, we do see a lot of nurse visits, meaning that, that, that part is just where they've come in for lab draws or quick screens that we have ordered and then as providers follow up on them.
We're going to have Dr. Milovitz sort of elaborate on how our clinic compares to all of her other clinics with utilization.
Good morning, Mayor, Council members. Our company has the privilege of serving 18 clients in two states and several of them are municipalities. And so my vantage point is looking at different populations and how they sort of look relative to others, as well as, you know, how the clinics are doing overall. And what's been fascinating to me about the City of Mesa Health and Wellness Center is that really from the get-go, from its inception, the clinic utilization has been statistically different in terms of its uptake compared to other clinics. We have other large municipalities and really our goal is to hit 50% in the first six months. And, you know, as you can see from the data, that the uptake has been really, really different. And I think when, you know, I look back and kind of do the postmortem on, on why that is, it really is a testimony to the city and the planning behind it and the dissemination of information beforehand. So it, that's really kind of a unique difference that, that I'm seeing from my level. The other sort of variables that I'm seeing are that typically a new practice, people come in and just sample it. They're like, okay, I'll come in for my sore throat, I'll come in for my bronchitis. But what's fascinating to me is that really almost out of the gates, we're seeing a lot of disease management. And, you know, if someone who wants to affect population health and lower risks and improve health outcomes, which ultimately will reduce long-term claims, which is what the city really wants, as part of this mission, is that we're seeing those disease management cases. We're seeing high cholesterol, diabetes, high blood pressure, depression, stress management, all of those things that are really important, powerful predictors of future health or, and ill health, if you will. So that's really been a very interesting phenomenon to see out of the gates. The other thing that we're seeing pretty early on is that when I look at the mixture of patient types, males versus females, the city has a very, some male-dominated organization, which is fine, but we're seeing more females in the center than male. 56% of, of all patients being seen are women. And that's great because women tend to be higher utilizers of healthcare than men, so that's the target audience that we want. But these are the dependents of your employees. And that's a very interesting phenomena for me because typically, when you have a workplace near-site clinic for an employer group, you really, your target audience is the employees for that first year, for better or worse. You just want to get those people in, get them buying in as stakeholders, and then you hit the dependents as really as base two. But the fact that we're already getting dependents in the door, I think, is really, really powerful in terms of the messaging that the city is getting out, number one. And then number two, just the, the leadership behind the, the value proposition of what the center represents for the city. And so that's a, that's a reflection on all of you and it's, it's, it's reflected in what we're seeing in the center. The other thing is that we're seeing a lot of little people. So 15 years and under, about almost 15% of the population that we're seeing are, are young people, really young people. And again, those are the family members of who your employees are. And so that idea of that trust and that engagement is really different from what I'm seeing in other workplace clinics. So it's really, I, I think, a testimony not only to your phenomenal staff that you have here, the city manager's commitment to this and, and mayor to yours and to the city councilman members about this. And then lastly, is this idea of what is a medical home? That if people identify a primary care practice as where they want to come for the resources, for their medical information, for where they feel like they have their medical advocacy. And when we look at patient satisfaction surveys, we ask that question. And by and far, the majority of people actually identify the center this early on as their medical home. And again, that's what we want. We want to take care of this population and really help manage them much more effectively. And so it's, it's really, it's been a unique and amazing experience for me, looking at it from my side of the table, to be able to say, wow, this is fantastic. This is exactly what we want. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Yeah, Mayor, I just, I want to just thank everyone here that's made the presentation because this has been a remarkable journey. We've been talking about it with the staff for a long time. You know, it all really started with a conversation, what can we do better as an employer to serve our employees? Recognizing there's always the, the discussion about the expense of healthcare and that certainly is a driving factor, but at the end of the day, it's also making sure we have a healthy and productive workforce. Our greatest resource, our significant resource that keeps the city going is our employees. And so trying to look at the whole package of what we can do to make sure we're meeting their needs. Healthcare obviously rises to the top very quickly. And just trying to figure out new models and different approaches to address that. And I think it's been nice to see the success of this and the, really the response from our employees because as I tell them, you know, their health is very important to us in a very selfish way for the City of Mesa. We need to have healthy employees. We want them at work. We don't want them worrying about the spouse or children and their health needs. And so I believe that this appears to show us that we're on the right path to addressing a lot of those, those issues and hopefully it'll continue to grow and expand and it'll become part of what we do as the City of Mesa. It's fun to go to the clinic, well, maybe not when you're sick, but, but it, but it feels like it's still, it's part of the family of Mesa. It's not some other just third party that's sitting out there. It's, Dr. Wathier and Kristen have done a really nice job. They're part of Mesa. They, they are part of this family and providing our needs. And it's nice to have them as dedicated and committed to looking after the health of our employees as anyone would. So we're appreciative for what they've done and, and all the things. And thanks for Donna bringing this to us. They've really stepped up and delivered everything we expected. So I think it's been a good six months and we'll keep writing this and do another evaluation. And, you know, I keep getting the pressure, well, we need to expand, we need to grow. And we did add some more assistance to help out on the peak times. I think we did that to make sure that, you know, we had some times where we saw kind of a higher demand for appointments and so we did bring in some additional resources. So we'll keep monitoring this and if we think there's opportunity, again, it's all about if we can service, the more employees that we can provide this kind of service to, in the long term, that's to our benefit as an organization.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Any other comments, Mr. Pinter?
Just wanted to, what a wonderful place. I've had the opportunity, and I think they were looking at me, they didn't want to violate HIPAA here, but I have, I have gone to the clinic and been very happy with the service, professionals. If you're worried about confidentiality, they keep a strict confident, confidentiality, the way they handle things, it's been wonderful. But the piece that's, I think, that hasn't been mentioned is the quality of the visit. And if you go to another doctor, I've had this experience, and they are in and out in 30 to 45 seconds and a quick this or that, this is, you will be so impressed with the experience that you have coming to this clinic. Quality, they spend time with you, they run through everything. It, it, it's just amazing. I, I always find myself at a loss of words for this because I'm so happy to see how it's been going. But I appreciate the experience, look forward to using it, having family members use it in the future and really appreciate the quality of people that we have here. Another success story in innovation, I mean, it just never ends here at Mesa, so this is one of them.
That's in your district.
Yes, and it's in district two. But that's not why we did it. That's fine.
Wow. We, we need to do more projects in district two because they're so successful. Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, I was skeptical about this when it first started, but I'm a believer too. But I'm curious as to how the utilization is going to affect our, our costs for providing employee healthcare. And it's too early to tell, I think, but, but, you know, it'll be interesting to see what those trends look like. And, I mean, my kids have been there, I've been there. I was shocked, I'm like, why is the doctor hanging around in the room still? It was, it was really, it's like, what are you still doing here? You know? Oh, no!
Yeah, similar experience to Councilmember.
That's a great question, Mayor Councilmember Richardson. So one of the things, we, when we did the modeling for this, we, we wanted to see what the cost would break down on a visit to this clinic versus someone going to another doctor in, in our system. And, and we're comparable, we're right in line with that. And it really came to the conclusion that, and we've told this to our employees, if you're going and you have a personal doctor that you're going to, please continue going to that doctor if you feel comfortable and you're getting the service you need because you may have a history with them, you're comfortable. What this is about is what we have seen, and you're hearing the stories, is utilization not just in the clinic, but we're getting more employees that are now regularly going to see a medical care provider. And that's what's key for us because what we're hoping is, and we think, now, we'll argue that we think this care coming to this clinic is superior than anything you'll ever, you'll get anywhere else. But the key is, is to get our employees, we want them to, to be concerned about their health, we want them consulting with a, a medical professional. And that's what we're really trying to do, is make this convenient and accessible because we do think that the payoff, the real big payoff, it may be a little bit now, but we think long-term, well, it's not even long-term, but in the kind of more near-term and long-term, as we are able to identify longer, more costly healthcare issues that we can mitigate against chronic disease or other issues that we can identify now and avoid those really expensive where our healthcare, when we break down what we pay, the $50 million a year, whatever we pay in claims, the most significant is that really that acute care. When someone has to go in for that specialized care, they have to be in a hospital care, that's when our costs dramatically increase. And so our goal is to really try to get into this primary care model where we're helping to educate, instruct, and provide preventative care so we can avoid against those costs in the future.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I'll just say, amend everything I've heard here, it's, it's great to have this, but we want to be a good employer. We want our employees to know that we love them and appreciate them and it's not about, we want to provide all, all the quality services we can. So I applaud Mr. Brady and the council for coming up with this great idea. It's obviously very successful. Thank you very much. Please keep it up. The next item on our agenda is hear a presentation and discuss the photo safety program.
Good morning to you. I'm Assistant Chief Mike DeVorek over the Investigation Bureau. And with me today, I want to introduce our panelists and the speakers for today's presentation. But to my, to my right is Lieutenant Aaron Spicer. He is responsible for our photo safety program. And to my left is Lieutenant Michael Bellows in charge of our, our traffic section. To give you a short background leading into our presentation today, as if you recall, approximately one year ago, we appeared before the city council regarding the photo safety program. Based on that discussion, direction was provided by the council on several key areas in order to further improve and evolve our photo safety program. Our initial response in order to carry those out was we established a photo safety steering committee. And this was formed to include all of our key stakeholders, resulting in a collaborative and cooperative effort to implement the various improvements that were suggested and talked about. Part of that committee that was mentioned was all the stakeholders within the city departments, as well as included our Mesa residents and school systems. The chairperson of the photo safety steering committee, to my right, is Lieutenant Aaron Spicer. And he's going to talk a little bit about what they have worked on and the accomplishments that they've had towards working for these improvements. I'll turn it over to Lieutenant Spicer.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, Council. Again, this, for some of them, or some of you to recap of meeting last month, but essentially our photo safety program, we believe it works. Two key points to that, our Mesa residents are learning better driving habits and crashes have been reduced substantially when compared to neighboring cities and jurisdictions. This is one of our social media pieces, which we can talk about in a minute, but really what we're addressing is these kind of issues through our program. And this video is one of our outreaches in social media. It was a near-miss collision and we issued a violation to the driver, but those are the kind of things that, that we see day in and day out in the city. And, and our overall traffic safety program, we'd like to, we'd like to curb. Our council directives, you have on the screen above you there, there was five of them and the chief had just talked about, and we'll touch on each of those briefly throughout the rest of the presentation. But our photo safety steering committee was comprised of really kind of a collaborative group of stakeholders from, from within the city and also without, to include our partners in Gilbert and Mesa schools. We have some representation from our city, from our residents, purchasing procurement, city manager's offices, so forth and so on. So our first directive was to implement a system to improve, to ensure improvements in our program. And our traffic safety plan, our photo safety program is really part of our overall, three Es are our traffic safety program, which is engineering, enforcement, and education. Just a couple of the things there, our engineering, our road design, our marking, so forth and so on. Our enforcement would be our photo enforcement, our DUI seatbelt campaigns, and then our outreach of education as well. Excuse me. Our program improvements, we established a photo safety steering committee, we just talked about. We updated some of our policies relating to photo safety within the police department, established a complaint tracking and auditing database, and standardized statistical reporting through our transportation, so we have one voice moving forward. And as well as our social media outreach. Took a couple of screenshots of our social media outreach. In the upper right corner there, we have a DUI involved collision happened early in the morning about two months ago. Our Mesa Channel 11 and our red light PSA would be in the middle there. And then our don't run red light campaign was the video that I just showed you. And we put that out on social media and widely shared, we got great feedback from it. So regularly, we've been putting out pieces on our, on our social media outreach. The second directive was to research the expansion of school zone cameras. Couple of key points to that, where we established our partnership with Gilbert Mesa schools. And then we completed some speed and feasibility studies for the five priorities listed below for school zones, which would be our Porter Elementary. Currently, our installation is underway at that location. Red Mountain High School, Mountain View High School, Westwood High School, and Highland Junior High. We found that some road design challenges weren't compatible with Dobson High. We continue to use our traditional enforcement-type methods at that location. Directive three was to eliminate our photo safety or photo enforcement vans. That was completed early this, about a year ago, March of 2014, and those vans were repurposed to fleet. Reinvestment of our, our fourth direct was reinvestment of funds into our photo safety or traffic safety plan. We purchased speed trailers. And Lieutenant Bellows talked a little bit about our deployments in the traffic section, but we bought one for each of our patrol districts that we can monitor, respond better to our, to our complaints, our speeding complaints, and also to validate and educate drivers in that area. Transportation, purchased some driver feedback boards, which are the, your speed flashes when their vehicle approaches an intersection or a location. They identified some areas for deployment there. And our moving radar program, that's up and running at our districts and we're, we're ongoing training with our, with our, our patrol function to, to bring a moving radar, a program where the radars are operable while they're driving or while vehicles moving, so we don't have officers sitting in stationary places. So as they're moving throughout the city, they are able to provide an enforcement aspect too. The fifth directive was to prevent a formal, or present a formal review for council within a year. I think we've addressed the directives in this presentation as part of our overall traffic and safety program. We currently, recap, we currently operate 20 photo safety intersections with five school zones. This is a collaborative effort between all of our stakeholders. And I wanted to share a couple of our results that we've seen in the next, next couple of slides. So over time, and I just have a simple graph to represent this, but over time, what we've seen is our violations mail out to our city versus our residents versus our non-residents have gone down or decreased about 7%. I just kind of did a two-year snapshot every two years there, but you'll see that I think that lends to our, our city residents are, are, are learning and they're, they're learning better driving habits compared to some of our, our visitors or, or non-city residents. Notice the complicated slide, but the key here to this slide is, and this is part of our overall transportation study that was done through our transportation section. But what we found was that for the 85th percentile, for the majority of drivers, we found that during school hours, since, before our program was installed versus after, that during school hours, our speeds have reduced over eight miles an hour in school zones for the, and four during after-school hours, 4.2 miles an hour during after-school hours. So our, the drivers are moving slower in our school zones and I think that speaks a lot to our awareness of, of school programs. So what have we seen overall versus our photo safety intersections versus our, we call them comparison locations, which would be locations where there's similar characteristics at, you know, roadway approaches and lane usage and so forth and so on. We've seen, we've seen pretty significant reductions at both our city locations, our comparison locations, our photo safety intersections and citywide. And the next slide is really, speaks to our overall traffic safety program, which photo safety is, is one key component or one component of that. At the top, you'll see our, our Mesa overall collisions reduced by 37.5 miles an hour. This is average per year before versus after. And our comparisons would be Phoenix and so forth and so on down the list, but you can see that Mesa's done a phenomenal job in, in reducing collisions or reportable collisions at citywide. I think that's a testament to our overall program and it, when it works. So thank you. On behalf of entertaining any questions or direction from council.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any questions regarding the presentation? It was interesting to me that in all of the cities, crashes are down. Is that a nationwide trend? Is there some explanation for why everyone seems to be safer everywhere?
I believe, I don't know if there's a, I think there's a lot of factors, and collisions are dynamic events. But I think in Gilbert, we saw a substantial increase.
Yeah.
Which is our neighbor to the south, and statewide and in other cities. I'd say whatever we're doing in the City of Mesa is working quite well. So, again, I think that's the collaborative enforcement, education, and engineering challenges are three E's that we address continually. So, I think collisions are just the dynamic events that, there's a lot of different factors involved in them.
And I'm sorry, I misread the chart. Obviously, Gilbert is not declining.
Yeah, this was really a piece from our transportation, and a really comprehensive study that they did on collisions, citywide and throughout the valley, and really throughout the state. So, yeah, our analysis showed that the Gilbert collisions were up substantially.
Great. Well, I mean, too bad for them. I mean, too many restaurants, I think, is what's going on. All those food trucks, there you go. Well, thanks. So my understanding is that we have an annual status on this program, and that's what we've just done today, and I assume that this will occur again another year from now, unless we want to hear from them sooner. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I'm supportive of the program. I think the results are obviously good, and so I endorse it. Mr. Richens?
I just got to throw in, I really appreciate the reinvestment of the funds into comprehensive, you know, the engineering piece and the education piece was a really important component that, I don't know that we stumbled upon it, but it just, the collaboration that you guys worked with across the city, I think, has really contributed to our success higher than other cities. I love the driver feedback signs. I think my wife has high score on a couple of them, but I think they're very helpful in helping us, "Oh, wow, I didn't realize I was speeding." And that's really what we're trying to get at. The goal is safety. It's not, you know, a lot of people talk, "Hey, this is about revenue," and it's really not here. We're really reinvesting it to make sure that our streets are progressively, excuse me, progressively getting safer through these three E's. And so, well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, gentlemen. Good work. Next item on our agenda is acknowledge receipts of minutes from boards and committees. It's been moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I, thank you very much. I apologize. My mistake. Next item is actually item two, information regarding job order contracting projects. Council, any questions on these, the status of any contracts?
What's happening at Red Mountain, the upgrades for the fields there in that project? That's kind of cool. Just real quick, that's, feels like a neat project.
Mayor, Councilmember Richens, good morning. This is really just rehab of the softball fields, get them, you know, as they continue to age, we need to just go in there laser level and replace the infield mix, do some work on the infield, and bring them back up to a safe and playable level. So, that'll address these.
Nice. Always reinvesting in our projects.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions regarding contracts? If not, we're now on item three, acknowledge receipts of minutes from boards and committees. It's been moved and seconded from someone, I'm sure. There we go. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is hear reports on meetings and/or conferences attended. Council, Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to go with Vice Mayor Kavanaugh yesterday, and I know that Councilman Berlino was at the Red Mountain campus for Mesa Community College, and we're celebrating their 50th anniversary in the valley. We're very grateful for MCC and everything that they do as a community partner, and so we congratulate them on 50 years.
Here, here. I think there's another banquet tonight that we're all going to celebrate. So, congratulations to MCC. Any other comments? I know it has been a busy week. We had the, I'd like to thank everyone involved in Mesa hosting the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast earlier this week. I thought that was a great event, and it was our turn to be the host, and I thought Mesa showed real well. Also, the same day, I was, I thought it was a great honor for us to host Wendy Spencer, who's the head of the National Service Organization. She came to Mesa and helped us celebrate the great utilization that we have with AmeriCorps and other national service folks that are really doing a lot of the good work with our human services agencies in Mesa. So Mesa stands out as a community that's really utilizing that program comparatively more than others in the region and in the nation. So I think that's something to be proud of. So it was nice to have her here. If there's nothing else, scheduling of meetings and general information, Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure you're all aware of this, but today is National Transportation Infrastructure Day. And as a result, there is a parade, stand-up for transportation parade, of which Mr., our mayor, Vice Mayor Kavanaugh, is representing Mesa and Valley Metro in a parade of transportation vehicles, starting in Hans Park today. So, good for Mr. Kavanaugh, representing Mesa well. This weekend will, is downtown will be very busy. It's Cycle Mesa, April, the 10th, 11th, and 12th. There'll be bike racing, food booths, and Kid Zone. It's a pretty exciting event, seeing that happen right here in downtown Mesa. Also, the next household hazardous waste and electronics appliance recycling collection event will be this Saturday, April 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Drop off your items at 2412 North Center Street, that's Center Street north of McKellup's. Our next study session will be Thursday, April 16th at 7:30. Also, well, we'll mention this next week, we have a Celebrate Mesa will be coming on the 18th. We'll talk more about that. Thank you.
Great. Well, we'll all look forward to Celebrate Mesa, that'll be a huge event. If there's nothing else, we'd entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. It's been moved in a second. All, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.